Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Brea City Council Meeting, Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. I'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please let the record reflect that a quorum is present. This time, I'll call on Steve Davis to lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Steve?
And those that would pray with me. Father God, thank you for this time of being here. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss the business of the city, help us to make good decisions, watch over us and guide us in all that we do, help us to work together for the betterment of all the citizens of Brea, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Steve. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Steve Davis, with a second by Steve Cottle. Is there any discussion on the motion to approve the agenda? Seeing none, I request a voice vote. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, please say no. The motion carries and the agenda is approved. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from our October 7, 2025 meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Jerry Little, and a second by Katie Startsman. Is there any discussion on the motion to approve the minutes from October 7, or any changes or edits that need to be made? Seeing none, I request a voice vote. All in favor of the motion to approve the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, please say no. The motion carries and the minutes are approved. The next item is public comment, and we do have two speakers that are signed up for a public comment. Both speakers are signed up to speak about health care and food stamps. And I'll go ahead and read this, and I would ask that these comments be directed toward things that are business-related to the city of Brea. The public is given the opportunity to speak at the city council during the public comment portion of the meeting. Any public comments exceeding three minutes should be scheduled as a presentation to the mayor's office. When recognized by the mayor, please go to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Comments should be business-oriented, and we ask for no inappropriate language or naming of any person individually during your comments. Business-oriented is defined as any item of business on the agenda, including ordinances, municipal orders, and resolutions, along with comments related to services provided by the city of Brea. First person we have is Lisa Abbott. Ms. Abbott, you have the floor. If you'll take this podium right here. You're welcome.
My name is Lisa Abbott. I've lived and worked in Brea for 25 years. My children grew up here. I know and care about my neighbors. Some of my kids' favorite teachers are seated in this room. My closest friends and family are here. I love this town. I love the way we take care of each other, in good times and in bad. Right now, unfortunately, things are very, very bad for many people I know and love in Brea and across our country. I'm angry and I'm upset, and I'm here to ask you, my local elected officials, to do everything in your power to stand up for Bereans and protect the folks who are being hurt right now. As you know, nearly 600,000 Kentuckians who rely on food stamps did not receive funds on November 1st. This was a deliberate choice by our president, I will not name names, who refused to tap a contingency fund established by Congress to provide food stamp benefits during a government shutdown.
Ma'am, if you don't mind me interrupting, this is about-
Thanks to the actions of a federal judge, he was ordered to do so yesterday.
Ma'am, if you don't mind, I'm going to rule the comments out of order because this is supposed to be related to business conducted by the city of Brea.
To receive just half of what their families were owed this November.
Ma'am, please stop. Please, please, listen to the chair.
And there's no plan for what happens if the government shutdown extends to November.
Mr. Hayes, if you would please assist.
What are we even doing here?
That's enough.
Meanwhile, my next floor neighbor learned that on November 1st-
The comments are out of order. She'll have to remove her. Please.
...are going up 230% from $425 to $1,000.
Ma'am, with all due respect, comments are out of order.
Can you all help me stay, please? I'd love to hear from you if you'd like me to stay.
With that objection, we're going to, we're going to take a five-minute recess. We'll reconvene at 6:40, and if you would cut the camera, we'll come back in five minutes. Thank you. With that objection, we'll go ahead and resume the meeting and end the recess. I would again ask any public speaker to please take the guidance of the chair. We do have a municipal order that was passed by the council that dictates the policies and procedures for our legislative body meetings, and comments are to be business-oriented only. Had the speaker yielded, I would have asked that comments be sent by email. We'd be glad to do that, and if there's some action that needs to be taken by the council that is business-related, we'll be glad to hear the comment. But again, national-level policy is not really related to anything that's run by the city of Brea. The food stamp program and Medicaid program are run by federal government and by the states and not by the city. So we do have another speaker, Laura Mangus, from the city of Brea. Ma'am, if you'll come on up. And again, I would ask you to keep comments related to make it business-related. Thank you. You have the floor.
I was wondering if the city of Brea makes contributions to the Brea Food Bank with the idea that if people are hungry, and the banks across the country are being depleted rapidly. I mean, I made a contribution myself last week, but my little pittance isn't going to take care of hungry people.
Sure. I'll be glad to answer that. With that objection from the council, the city of Brea does own a building that the Brea Food Bank operates out of. It's operated by Brea Faith Community Outreach. They run the food bank, and also the Bereans United for Rent and Utility Relief, and the Gaily Transient Fund, which is actually run by our police department in cooperation with the Brea Faith Community Outreach. Donations are made by private individuals. Typically, they ask for cash donations rather than food donations. I don't know if that has changed.
No.
But we do provide in-kind support for the food bank, and I know that they're open for business on a regular basis and do a good job in our community. So, yes, ma'am, we do. And if there are any further business-related comments, please proceed.
Well, I'm just wondering if the city of Brea makes cash contributions to the bank, too?
No, ma'am. We do not. And again, this is not an interactive process. It's a public comment period. It's related to city services or items on the agenda. Go ahead.
I have one more thing, and John knows what it is. The last time y'all were supposed to have a meeting, Ms. Allen and I showed up and nobody was here. And I told John, "Do you think you might put a note on the door saying we've canceled the meeting?" Not everybody goes on Facebook. So I didn't go on Facebook, and I was prepared to come to a meeting. Can we do something like put a note on the library bulletin board, letting people know when meetings are going to be canceled?
Thank you, ma'am. I'll ask the city administrator to take that under advisement. Appreciate your comments. Thank you. All right, and that is our two speakers for this evening. Next, we will move-
Mayor?
Yes.
Just as it was germane to the comment about the food bank.
Yes.
I know a number of us received an email either last week or this week. Days tend to run together, but there's been an effort made, an anonymous donation, that is going to match any donations to the food bank between now and November 11th, match dollar-for-dollar up to $10,000. And as that information, I think, is in the public good, I thought it'd be a good time to share that.
Good. Thank you, John. All right, moving forward, we do have the John G. Fee and Janice Blythe Awards tonight. That is given out from time to time by our Brea Human Rights Commission. I think we have almost everybody here. I know there are several members. And at this time, I will recognize the chair of the Brea Human Rights Commission, Ms. Sharon Mitchell. Sharon, you have the floor. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and city council. I appreciate the opportunity to make this presentation. For many of you, I don't know how much you know about the Brea Human Rights Commission, but tonight, we're excited to present two individuals who have displayed exceptional dedication to promoting human rights within the city of Brea. The John G. Fee Social Justice Award was first awarded in 2013 to recognize outstanding efforts of a Brea resident or group who has championed human rights within the community. The award was named in honor of John G. Fee, founder of Brea College, who believed that men and women, boys and girls, black and white, and of all ages and religious beliefs should have the right to an education. In my words, I say that John G. Fee was an equal-opportunity educator. The first award was granted to the concerned citizens of Brea, which was an organization which was a forerunner of the Brea Human Rights Commission. The organization played an instrumental role in resolving tensions following a tragic racial incident in 1968. Tonight, we would first like to present the John G. Fee Award, and we would like Ms. Dr. Eve Fontaness to come forward. Stand over here with me.
Okay.
There you go.
Thank you.
I would like to give you the words that was sent in for nominating Dr. Fontaness. Says, "I would like to nominate Eve Fontaness for the John Fee Award in recognition of his unwavering commitment to human rights and advocacy in the Brea community. Eve has consistently demonstrated courage, compassion, and leadership in creating a more inclusive and equitable community. As a dedicated diversity advocate in Brea, Eve has worked hard tirelessly to ensure that voices too often that are marginalized are heard and respected. He's been a strong supporter of the LGBTQ+ students and community members. He's provided encouragement, visibility, and safe spaces where individuals can be their authentic selves. His advocacy goes beyond words. He has actively engaged in programs and initiatives that foster acceptance, belonging, and understanding. Eve's services are, he has served on numerous committees reflecting his determination to be a voice for those who need it most, whether addressing equity issues or supporting vulnerable populations or promoting human dignity. He consistently steps forward to represent and defend those who may otherwise go unheard. His ability to listen deeply, to speak with integrity, and act with fairness has made a lasting impact on both individuals and the broader community. Eve embodies the spirit of John Fee's legacy by standing for justice, equality, and compassion in everyday life. His efforts have not only supported individuals in need, but strengthened Brea as a whole by modeling what it means to champion human rights. For these reasons, this nominee, this person nominates Eve Fontaness for the John Fee Award. And for these reasons, the Human Rights Commission is proud to award the John G. Fee Social Justice Award to Dr. Eve Fontaness."
Thank you so much. I just want to thank the Human Rights Commission. I've served on the Human Rights Commission for six years, and I know the work and dedication they have done. And I will continue to support any actions to promote equality in this city. And I just thank you to the city of Brea. I thank the Human Rights Commission. I just retired after 33 years of education, so I am so excited and sad. But thank you so much for everything. Thank you, guys, so much.
Okay. Now, stay around, because we want to have a group picture.
A group picture, okay.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Also being awarded this evening is the Dr. Janice Blythe Youth Award. It was previously known as the Fee Youth Award, and it was renamed in 2020 to honor the late Dr. Janice Blythe, who was a Brea College professor and administrator. Dr. Blythe was a prominent social justice advocate and a longtime commissioner of the Brea Human Rights Commission. This award is presented to a remarkable youth, age 22 or younger, who has actively promoted social justice and fought against discrimination within the global Brea community. At this time, I'd like for Ms. Ryan Anello to please come forward. Okay, I am proud, this is the words from the nominee, "I'm proud to nominate Ryan Anello for her courageous leadership and commitment to inclusion for the Dr. Janice Blythe Youth Award. Ryan has demonstrated outstanding character by working with peers and starting the LGBT club at Brea Community, at the Brea Community High School, creating a safe and welcoming space for all students. Through this initiative, she has given her peers a voice, encouraged acceptance, and built a stronger sense of community. In the classroom, Ryan consistently includes others, makes every student feel valued. Her actions, whether inviting someone into a group, offering support, or simply showing kindness, demonstrate her belief that everyone deserves respect and friendship. She is truly a friend to all and treats each person she encounters with dignity. Ryan's commitment extends beyond her classroom involvement. She actively participates in the JAG-related activities, including working alongside students with disabilities. Her willingness to serve others and her dedication to ensuring every student feels welcome reflect her compassion and strong sense of responsibility." Ryan, we're presenting the Dr. Janice Blythe Youth Award to you for being a friend and an advocate for those who are unable or unwilling to speak up and stand up. Thank you for standing up and standing out.
I'm very thankful for this award. I'm very thankful for Ms. Harris for applying me for it, because I wasn't even aware of it beforehand. There's something very wonderful she did. Thank you so much.
People see you when you stand up. Thank you.
Sharon, if we could, do we want to get the award recipients here, and we'll make sure we get a photo for the newspaper to publicize the awards? And I think the whole Human Rights Commission could come up, and the two award recipients. And if the council members would move in, we'll do a picture. All right, again, thank you to Sharon, but also to all the Human Rights Commission members for the work you do in the community, and for Ryan and Eve for being good citizens, and appreciate you being here, and congratulations again on your award. All right, moving forward, the next item on the agenda is tourism, and I'll recognize council member Jerry Little. Jerry, you have the floor.
Thank you. I want to talk about tourism. Sometimes our council gets a request, you know, to cut the restaurant tax. The restaurant tax was voted in around 2007. Before that, the council funded the budget, put some money into, the general fund budget, put some money into the tourism to help fund it. I just want to highlight some of the investments our Tourism Commission and directors have funded with the restaurant tax money. It's really hard to believe what all they've done. I'm going to read some of it. They did the complete design and renovation of the train station. They did the Karloff Gardens down at the train station. They did the log cabin improvements at the train station. They purchased the land on Adams Street where some of the gardens are. They purchased the Toll property at Chestnut Street. They purchased the old hotel property in Old Town. They did the design and remodel for the Brea Gallery and Event Center at the Toll Building on Chestnut Street. They did the design and remodel and build a pavilion for farmers' market and other events on Chestnut Street. They did the May-D Road shared use path, the Wayfinding Sign Project for tourist investors so they could know where this is going. They did the Indian Fort Trail, the splash pad at the pool, the Bicycle Mountain Bike Trail. And then here are some of the most recent tourism investments in our '24 and '25 and '25 and '26 budgets. They put $400,000 to help with the swimming pool rebuild, $137,500 for the pickleball at the city park. It's just about finished. It's down with the skate park. I think about $60,000 on the shared use path on Lip Street. That's about done. $215,000 for the Scafalcane shared use path, which, and then $250,000 for the trailhead bathrooms at the city park. Now, these last two have not been started yet, but they've been budgeted and funded. The construction hasn't started on the Scafalcane yet or the trailhead bathrooms at the city park. But as you can see, it's millions of dollars of restaurant tax that's been put in our city infrastructure for tourists, visitors, and our citizens to use and enjoy. Our Tourism Commission and directors have done a good job. Tourism yearly revenue now is around 1.5 million, and they have reserve built up to around 2.5 million now. I'm looking forward for our Tourism Commission and director working with our city to do something big that will help draw in more visitors, tourists, and our citizens to enjoy in the years to come. A lot of cities, and tourism sets a certain percentage of the tourism revenue with the consent of Tourism Commission and director to be spent on tourist-related infrastructure to be used in their cities. The reason that why they do it is because they can plan projects and not worry whether it be funded or not. The way it is now, we have to request each year, knowing whether or not the funding is going to be approved. And it's hard to plan anything large if you don't know whether you're going to have the funding or not. And I hope our Tourism Commission directors and our city administration will look into this. And one more thing, something for just everybody to think about, what if? Brea College has 50 acres of wooded land over on the corner of May-D Road and a bypass across from the Artisan Center. It would make a great park area, walk-in trails, nature preserve, ball fields, good park area. And you could probably build a big lake over there, the way the land lays, you know. With the lay of some of the land, you could have a nice big lake, endless possibilities. We're going to need more park and recreation space as we grow. Maybe our city, tourism, and Brea College could partner up and really make something we all could be proud of. Just remember, all things starts with an idea, then a plan, then funding, and then construction. A whole lot to it to get it done. It's something I almost forgot about here. I had to put this on the bottom of a list, and I think we may be doing some of this. Any tourist-funded project needs to have a plaque put on it, paid for by tourism. We need to let the people know what tourism money is going for. And now, tourism does other things in the city. I'm just talking about things we can see, you know, infrastructure that's been built. And I appreciate it, and I appreciate y'all listening to me. And if anybody's got any questions, I might be able to answer them. I don't know. I'd try. But thank y'all for listening.
Thank you, Jerry. Any further discussion by the council on tourism or the comments from Jerry? Katie, go right ahead.
Jerry, I just want to thank you for continuing this conversation and for the times you've recently been approaching the Tourism Commission on the council's behalf. And I think it's smart to be thinking about how we can continue to strategically partner with tourism. And I really appreciate you pointing out how the tourism investment in our infrastructure benefits residents as well as tourists. There was just a great article I came across talking about how that is the leading edge of some people's philosophy about tourism, is that it's not about, I'm just going to quote briefly, just a sentence, because I had to look it up when you were talking. "It's not about jobs and visitors anymore. It's also about residents. It's about beauty, emotion, and attachment. Do your residents love their town?" This is an article for city leaders. "Do your residents love your town? Do they brag about it? Can they take beautiful photos downtown, walk safely, hang out somewhere fun, and feel proud to call it home?" And so, I just, it's neat to me that I read this article earlier today, and then the things you're bringing up kind of align with the investments tourism has been making and your kind of vision- And then the things you're bringing up kind of align with the investments tourism has been making and your kind of vision for the future. So, thank you.
Well, you know, if we work together, all of us got to work together. You can't get nothing done by yourself. And, you know, we all don't agree all the time, but, you know, if we have, we can come together with something. And it's time, we've done a lot for our city, the restaurant tax has. I don't think some people might not understood just how much the restaurant tax has helped and what it done. We used to have to take money from our general fund. And we didn't put much in it back in '06 or '07, you know, might be $100,000. You know, that's a lot of money, but nothing like we've got now. And now, we need this money for city infrastructure, just like a, if we do a mile of street now, just blacktop it and mill it, it costs about $250,000. And we need to take our, you know, we've got to keep good streets for our people. That's one of the main things, streets and drainage and stuff. And tourism in a city and the college, we've got a chance to work together and really make something happen, I think. And I think we've got, it's nothing's going to happen next year. You know, I'll probably be dead and gone, you know. I won't be here too much longer, but I'm getting old. But it's, you know, a five, 10-year project, but you got to start someplace. And I just really appreciate you all listening to me.
Thank you, Jerry. And thank you, Katie, for your comment. Any further discussion or comments on the topic of tourism? All right, seeing none, we'll move forward. The next item on the agenda is street acceptance, and this is for Nandino Circle. I'll recognize Codes and Planning Administrator Amanda Haney. Amanda, you have the floor.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Council, City Administrator. Codes and Planning on Public Works has inspected Nandino Circle located just off North Dogwood, consisting of approximately 1,200 linear feet of street for acceptance into city maintenance. The street acceptance would be for curbs, gutters, roads, sidewalks, stormwater piping, and infrastructure, excluding the retention pond that's down on the lot with the apartments at the end. So, that's currently being privately maintained. As many of you know, this is an older development started in the early 2000s. So, we were able to get paving done, final paving done in 2019. And then this year, a local builder, Tommy Coke Properties, purchased the vacant lots and has helped us to get those punch list items finished. So, we've gotten, street lights are on order, should be set by Bluegrass any day. We're getting sidewalks. So, just kind of an infrastructure improvement. And this evening, we are requesting that the council accept that street and infrastructure for city maintenance.
Is there a motion to accept Nandino Circle as described by Amanda Haney into city maintenance? By Steve Cottle, with the second by Jerry Little. Any discussion or comments? Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll request a voice vote. All in favor of the motion to accept the Nandino Circle infrastructure into city maintenance, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries, and that is approved. Amanda, thank you, and thanks to your team for your work. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Ordinance Number 13-2025, Funding of Emergency Communications Center. And this is the first reading. Mr. Gilbert?
The ordinance is summarized as follows. Whereas pursuant to prior resolution, the city of Brea entered into a Madison County Emergency Communications Center interlocal agreement with Madison County Fiscal Court and the city of Richmond, Kentucky, back in September of 2025. Whereas the agreement provided that the Madison County Emergency Communications Center shall be jointly funded by the Madison County Fiscal Court, the city of Richmond, and the city of Brea. And whereas the agreement further provides that the parties to the agreement shall contribute to the projected center's budget on an annual basis based on the respective party's share of the total calls for service inside its jurisdiction from the previous calendar year. And whereas the agreement further provides that each party to the agreement shall determine its specific method of funding and collecting its annual budget contribution. And whereas the city council of the city of Brea has determined to enact a reliable, equitable, and sustainable funding mechanism to support its annual budget contribution. Now therefore be ordained by the city of Brea, the Commonwealth of Kentucky. Section 1 provides for definitions of the ordinance. Section 2 provides for the establishment of the 911 fee. Effective for water bills due on or after January the 10th, 2026, there is hereby imposed a monthly 911 service fee on each active water meter located in the incorporated area of the city of Brea. The fee shall be assessed according to the following schedule. Non-commercial: $3.50 a month. Commercial: $41.67 a month. Industrial, large commercial: $125 a month. Section 4 provides for the collection of fees. Section 5 provides for the use of the fees. All funds collected under this ordinance shall be used exclusively for the provision, operation, and maintenance and improvement of the Madison County 911 Emergency Communication System. Section 6 provides for enforcement. Section 6, 7 provides for severability. Section 8 provides for the effective date beginning January 1, 2026. And Section 9 provides that all ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict herewith are repealed. This ordinance shall be published according to law.
And again, this is the first reading of Ordinance Number 13-2025. Per past practice, I will open the floor for any discussion by the council on the first reading of Ordinance Number 13-2025. Any discussion or comments? Steve?
One thing that I would put out to the council, and I think it was something that was also discussed in the work session, is I would suggest that we potentially have a special call meeting a week from tomorrow, which I believe is November the 12th. Given the fact that this will have to go to the PSC, and that creates some timing issues potentially. That also would give enough time, I think, to give people some notice if they would like to come to that meeting. I would also request, if we have a special call meeting, to put public comments. Because it is a special call meeting, the only things that can happen on that meeting are those that are on the agenda specifically. And it would be called the meeting to order public comments and then the reading of the ordinance. So, I don't know if anybody else, how do y'all feel about that? I think we all, you know, it was discussed in our work session. But I do think that would be important just in terms of being able to turn that around with PSC for January 1st.
Any other comments or discussion, Teresa?
Would it be better if we open those public comments at the next regular meeting when we have, well, we would have the vote though, wouldn't we? At the special call? So, that wouldn't work? Okay.
Yeah, the notion is that we just really want to make sure that there's public comment before we vote on anything.
I just would want people to be informed in a week. We could get that out on the.
The other thing that we can do is we do have a hyperlink on the city website for draft ordinances. That's what it's under on the homepage. So, we can make sure that this is posted also if it's already on there. So, that is available for people to view online. Also, that would be available by contacting the clerk's office or the city administrator as well, as well as I think any of you could provide that. So, to your point, I think that we can, and Steve, to yours, I think that it's up to the council. If there's no objection, you know, that's something that Sean and I can call, and we can put it on. That was discussed at the work session last week. Seemed to be a general consensus, and I think we can discuss that, and then we'll open it up for any further discussion. Ronnie? Ronnie, check your mic.
I didn't hear anything about how much money the city was going to put in it because I think the first time we earned, I think it's something under $100,000. But shouldn't it be in that ordinance?
No, it doesn't have to be in the ordinance, but the city would be contributing some initially. Sean, do you have an estimate on that or?
Mayor, I would just say that it's between 75 and 100,000.
Per year?
Depending on how we collect and how much we collect and vacant accounts and those kind of things.
Is that something that we are planning on doing every year?
It depends on how the numbers fall each year. You know, it's based on calls for service. So, if our calls for service comes up, it obviously will adjust our contribution as well. So, it's just something we have to look at yearly based on the budget.
Jerry?
The reason why we're doing that, you know, people may look at the county and say, well, the county is not charging this much. But we don't have the water meters that the county's got to spread the cost. The county has got tons of water meters, and they can spread the cost. And we held it down the best we could, and that's the reason that we're paying, you know, 75 to 100 out of the general fund to. We've done our best to hold it as low as we could. That's all I've got to say.
Steve?
I would point out, I know Katie hadn't made a comment. I would point out that the residential rate is the same as the county. And we thought, that was very important that in many of the areas of our city, you know, your neighbors are people who live in the county. And we did not want to have inequality in terms of if you live on this street, but this street over, you have a different residential rate. But just to.
The churches are the same too.
Churches are the same, yes, and nonprofits are the same.
It's the same as residential homeowner.
It's, we really, we talked a lot about it and went back and forth and all around. But I just wanted to make that point is that from a residential rate and a nonprofit, churches and things like that, it would be the same.
Katie?
Thanks, and you guys are asking question, or bringing things up that I wanted to bring up too. So, thank, good teamwork, y'all. One of my questions was just a clarifying question because of some of the businesses that we discussed that will be impacted by this. How and when is that going to be noticed, particularly for the, you know, I mean, a residential bill? We will be seeing an increase, but for the businesses that will be seeing a larger increase, will they get a heads up on that or?
I don't think it's certainly something we can look into, Katie. I think on the passage, we can start moving forward with promoting that and letting people know what that looks like for each business or whatever. So, yeah, we can, we can look into doing that.
Did, I might not have heard it good, but if everything passes, it'll be your first bill you get in January is when the, okay, I might have read it repeatedly.
Further discussion on the first reading of the ordinance. Ronnie?
Well, let me ask you, should we also tell them that next, the year after, it will automatically upgrade if it needs to be, based on what's at bay, Sean?
Yes, sir. I'll read that part, Ronnie. That's actually in the ordinance. Give me just a second to get to it. That is in.
Could I?
Section 3, thank you.
Could I also make a clarify?
That's at the top of the next to last page. Says, "Beginning July 1, 2027, and on July 1 of each year thereafter, the monthly fee established under Section 2 shall automatically increase by the percentage change in the cost of living slash CPI adjustment as determined by the Kentucky Department of Local Government each January for the calendar year. In the event that COLA CPI does not increase, the monthly fee shall remain the same from the previous year." And it goes on to say that there's flexibility not to implement that if the council chooses. So, that is addressed. Any further discussion, Steve?
I was actually just going to point out that we will review that annually. And so, basically, if we do nothing, it will go up by the CPI.
Right.
It will be, that will be part of our budget process on an annual because, as Sean pointed out, the way that the city's contribution to the emergency, what is it, Communication Center is based on the number of calls in the city, so that could change as the time goes on. And so, it also depends on collection of bills and things like that. So, we will review that annually as part of our budget process.
Do you want to touch base on how that we got our share of it?
Yeah, so we, the, there was a total amount, I think it's 4.2, is that correct? 4.2 million for the operation of the Emergency Communication Center as a whole. And that work was done by, Sean was instrumental in that in his previous life as a fire chief. And Rose, our city administrator before that, they were involved on behalf of the city of Brea. Because, and I'll just say all this, I'm sure you all know it, but I'll say it for the record. Because we know that CSEP is going away, Madison County had to start to find a way to fund Emergency Communication Centers. I think it's important to realize, because I've seen, I've seen a lot of really bad misinformation about what this covers and what this does not cover. It does not pay for police cars. It does not pay for the radios that our first responders wear. It does not pay for any of the equipment that we have always paid for as part of our first responders. And I will say this, that as a city, and I commend those that came before me and that have been on this while I've been on council, we have done an exceptional job of making sure that our first responders are equipped with whatever they, whatever they need to do their job effectively. It also does not cover EMS. That is a whole separate thing. So, the ambulance service has nothing to do with this. This is to be able to maintain a countywide 911 service so that when your house is on fire, the correct people are sent to your house to put that fire out. Or if you are, if a crime is committed, the correct police officers are sent to that space to be able to respond to that crime. Or if you are having a medical emergency, EMS arrives where you're supposed to be. We do not want to ever go back to the days where Brea, Richmond, and Madison County have separate 911 services. Because frankly, we all like to bicker about how we're going to pay for things, but we want people to show up when emergencies happen. And currently, we have been able to have that service, and a lot of that came from CSEP as we moved into that space. We have already been doing things over the years to lower what our cost would be as we made this transition. Everybody loves them, but the new sirens, that's part of that because we did not need that complex of a system. These things have been happening for years and years, and we are at that point. And so, from that 4.2 million, it was divided up between Brea, Richmond, and Madison County. And we have about 20% of those calls, and that's how our amount comes out. So, as we have found a way, as we have looked at ways to cover this expense, and we all know about the land use charge that didn't go so well, and others decided that was not the way that they wanted to move forward. So, if all can't go that way, then this seems to be the best path forward. And so, as a council, we've worked on this. I commend our administration for doing a ton of work to find. And I think that one of the most important things that they committed themselves to was that all of the information that they were using was extremely accurate so that once we made this plan and rolled it out, we did not have questions about, well, my water line's this, my water, you know. We are making sure that we have all of the correct information. So, that's how we've gotten here. It was a very long explanation. So, if anybody has any questions, I'm sure all of us are happy to talk about that. But I think this is our best path forward, and thank you to Sean and Susan and their utility department for doing the hard work to get us to a place where the information that we're looking at is accurate, and it's reliable, and that we can move forward with the plan to make sure that we are consistently providing high-quality services to all the citizens in Brea and also Southern Madison County because our emergency services also cover much of Southern Madison County.
Ronnie?
One thing worrying me about what we're doing is the fact that we don't know the second year how much money out of the budget, our budget, of city money that we've got to put in. I mean, we're going to be obligated, the way it's set up, that we're going to have to put something in, and we don't know what the amount is.
And we have a say of that 4.2 million as we move forward. That's not, that is not a wild number that just continues to go up. There's also, in the first year, it goes down because of the transition costs that happened in the very beginning. But we have a seat at the table, and I think we do have some control over what that looks like. I don't think that it's a wild, could blow, unless everybody goes to like, you know, Walmart and calls 911 every five minutes, and our call volume explodes. But I think it, I think it would be pretty consistent.
Well, I hope it is, but I'm concerned. I don't like. Well, I hope it is. I'm, I'm concerned. I don't like city dollars going into that right from the beginning. And then not knowing down the road, where are we going to have to raise taxes?
Yeah.
Let me, let me come to, let me come to Jerry and then to Katie and then we'll open the floor back up. Jerry?
I'm going to be real quick. The twenty percent Steve said there, that twenty percent equals just a little less than nine hundred thousand we got to come up with is eight seventy or eight eighty or something. And what that does, those fees that, that, that we just said there, they don't hardly make that up. And that's where we had to take out, you know, seventy-five to a hundred thousand to make it up. But that's the amount of money, a little less than nine hundred thousand. But that four point two we're talking about, it's got a little bit of money built into it for capital improvements. That's just not a stripped out. It's got some excess in it to pay into Ronnie's point that would help from having to raise it, I think. That's right. And that's, that's all I'm going to say.
Let me go to Katie next. Katie?
Well, this is not saying anything Ronnie doesn't already know, but you know, we, I think in that work session, that was such a tricky thing because none of us wanted to have money coming out of the general fund. But we also, you know, are trying to balance what citizens are having to pay and what businesses are having to pay and try to make it equitable. And I am glad, I was happy when we, I just want to say publicly or remind us that we had paid last year or even in previous years. And so the amount that we're contributing is going to be going down overall. So that made, because wasn't it like two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand last year?
An average over several years.
So that makes me happy, Ronnie, that like even if it goes up some, it would be highly unlikely for it to get to a place where it has gone to that level before. Because I agreed in that work session, I was worried about, it almost felt like we were creating this pot of money already out of deficit, kind of, you know, since we have to kick in. But I, it just felt like the most equitable way to do it for citizens and, and businesses. But I, I understand what you're, you're concerned for sure.
It concerns me that we don't know what it's going to be at the end of this year. Where we have to dip in.
Okay, other comments on the first reading of the ordinance? Jerry?
You know, somebody's probably going to ask, well, the city of Richmond paid their peoples for the first year. But the reason they was able to do that, they've got such a bigger tax base than we've got. They've just got tons more money than we've got and they can stand it to take it out of the general fund for the first year. But we, we couldn't do it. You know, we would love to, but it didn't work that way. We didn't have the money to do it. So you know, if anybody asked us, well, why the city of Richmond paid their bodies for the first year? That's the reason.
Thank you, Jerry. Any further comments on the first reading? All right. What I'm hearing is that there is a consensus to have a special call meeting on Wednesday, November the twelfth. And I think the reason for that is that November the eleventh is Veterans Day. It's a holiday, federal holiday. So November the twelfth, we'll have Sean schedule that for six P M. And there will be public comment prior specifically on the ordinance to allow for public input before there's the second reading and the vote. Fair enough? Any further discussion? All right, seeing none. We'll move forward. Thank you all for the good discussion and for all the work that's gone into this. Next item on the agenda is department head reports. And tonight, I'm happy to welcome back Nancy Conley, our director of the tourism department. Nancy, you have the floor.
Good evening. Thank you. Today I will present some Brea tourism accomplishments and goals. But I first want to thank Councilman Little for highlighting Brea Tourism's partnerships and funded projects. We greatly appreciate your recognition of the collaboration, all the collaborative efforts that we have continued to do to advance Brea Tourism initiatives. So thank you. I broke this up into a few areas for you. So visitor services and staffing. Brea Tourism staff have provided visitor services to nearly twelve thousand walk-in visitors to date. We've mailed forty-two requests for physical information and answered one thousand one hundred and seventy-six information phone calls. Tourism staff provide comprehensive janitorial and event support services, including setup and teardown for event rentals, cleaning of the Welcome Center, gallery, the gathering space and the Chestnut Street Pavilion. As you know, our media manager and program manager positions both have been vacant for quite some time. I'm excited to share that we will soon welcome new employees into those roles. And looking at the Brea Gallery and Event Center, we have rental and event operations established at this time. To date, we have hosted eleven rentals as well as a few city events. Excuse me. This week, we'll be hosting four separate events in that facility, one of which is a two-day training. Looking at marketing and media, we've collaborated with Right Place Media on the fiscal year media and advertising plan. We're currently developing a mid-year plan with Fox fifty-six. We've expanded Brea's visibility through targeted advertising, digital campaigns and statewide media partnerships. We've increased media recognition, such as being named one of Smithsonian's fifteen best small towns to visit in the U.S. We promoted Brea to new and emerging visitor markets emphasizing arts, culture and outdoor recreation. Installed new artwork on the I seventy-five South billboard mile marker seventy-seven to attract interstate travelers. We printed banners with Q R codes directing to pages on the visitbrea.com website to have available at Brea City Park and various events throughout Brea. And most recently, we were approved as a neighborhood champion for the American Express Shop Small Saturday campaign, highlighting Brea's small business community. Looking at events and programming, the Chestnut Street Pavilion Concert Series ran May through October. This included ten concert nights. We held our annual Ellen N Day last June, which included a car show and a car parade sponsored by the Brea Volunteer Fire Department. We're excited that we were able to help support the Juneteenth celebration at the Chestnut Street Pavilion. We held a successful Brea Craft Festival this year, which welcomed one hundred and seven craft vendors, seven food vendors and nearly six thousand attendees. We were able to partner with the Brea Chamber of Commerce on the Spoonbread Festival and the Kentucky Guild of Artists and Craftsman Art Market. We provided an event sponsorship and, excuse me, shuttle service for both. Brea Tourism also hosted an information booth at the art market to engage visitors this year. The Brea Tourism Commission has awarded marketing reimbursements to strengthen local event promotion for the Kentucky Guild of Artists and Craftsmen, the Brea Farmers Market, the Brea Celtic Festival and the Levitt Aunt Brea Music Concert Series. And looking at beautification, we're really excited. We had completed an RFP for Christmas lighting and we have a contract in progress right now. This will be a very exciting project to share with all of you. We're continuing to work on additional beautification projects to enhance visitor appeal and community pride. Want to talk about grants a little bit. We successfully completed and submitted the final reporting for the ARPA Destination Marketing Organization, Tranche Two Grant. Excuse me. This grant began in twenty twenty-two. Lastly, I want to share with you some goals. These are just some of the highlights that we'd like to share. So we're looking to reinstate and rebrand the Learn Shop Program for this July. Develop a property and asset maintenance plan. Develop a Brea Ambassador Program that would help strengthen community partnerships and collaboration. We'd like to follow the city comprehensive plan when that is complete with a Brea Tourism Strategic Plan. Update visitor resource information, including all content on our visitbrea.com website, the Kentucky Tourism website. Update our tourism map and brochure and hopefully work in some updates on the mapping and listings on our pedestrian signs. In closing, I do want to thank you all for the opportunity to provide this highlighted report on Brea Tourism's accomplishments and goals. Our team remains committed to promoting Brea as a premier destination for arts, culture and outdoor recreation while supporting community engagement and economic growth. And please, again, please don't hesitate to reach out if you all have any comments, questions or feedback. We appreciate your support and collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Comments or questions for Nancy? Yeah, they're all let her off the hook on her first report? All right. Thank you, Nancy. Appreciate your report and the work that you and your team do on behalf of all of us. Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda, actually, department head reports. Would any other department head like to address the council? Priscilla, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, council and city administrator. This evening, I'm requesting a line increase in the park budget. Account number sixty oh five, line five six four two zero, which is outdoor furniture and fixtures. The requested increase is seven thousand dollars, which would bring the total on this line from fifty thousand to fifty-seven thousand. The additional funds are needed to purchase and install three shade structures at the ballpark due to recent increases in materials and installation expenses. We're a little bit short in that line. You're probably aware, we just installed five structures at the ballpark and this would complete that project. I'm requesting the funds now instead of at the amended budget process because we want these to be installed before the spring season. And right now, we've got a ten to twelve week lead time. So that's why, like I said, I'm doing this now. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Before we get into questions, I would ask for a motion to increase line item sixty dash zero five dash five six four by seven thousand dollars. Motion by Steve Cottle. Are you seconding Ronnie?
Yes.
Seconded by Ronnie Terrell. Is there any discussion on the motion to approve the overage in that line item? Any discussion? Jerry?
I think it's a very good overage. That's what we need.
Yeah, absolutely.
We need it, okay.
Other comments? Seeing none. Ronnie?
Well, I want to say one thing. I, I would hope we would get these three new ones up before the summer season because it was, we waited through the hot summer without the shades and then we finally got them up. So I don't want to see that happen next year.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, our request of voice vote. All in favor of the motion to approve the overage of seven thousand dollars as described, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. The motion carries and the overage is approved. Priscilla, thank you and appreciate the work by you and your team.
Thank you all.
Those shade structures have been a hit. They're much needed and welcome. Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is city administrator's report. No?
We have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jake, go right ahead, sir. You have the floor. I recognize Police Chief Jason Hayes.
Thank you, Mayor. City council, city administrator. I also am asking for a line overage request. The line is vehicle repair and maintenance line, two thousand five, five four, five two zero. I'm requesting this line be increased to sixty-five thousand dollars. We still have twenty thousand dollars in, remaining in this line, but the cost of a repair of one vehicle that we, they'd estimated to cost twenty-four thousand, is costing twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one to repair. So if we pay for the repairs right now, we'll be over in this line by seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-five. I have additional reasons if you guys want to hear them or if you have questions. A lot of that has to do with maintenance. We've hired three new officers and are working on hiring an additional SRO. So we've kept a few vehicles that normally we would auction off. They're a little higher in mileage. So the maintenance on those front ends, transmissions and stuff has kind of hurt us a little bit. So we're trying to make...
And your request was to increase that line item to sixty-five thousand total?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the overage by Steve Cottle? Is there a second by John Payne? Is there any discussion on the motion, Clarissa?
Just a question. What was the initial amount in that line item?
The initial amount was thirty thousand dollars. And then in August, I came to you guys and we increased it by fifteen thousand to forty-five. This is going to put us over that forty-five thousand. And it's just, a lot of it came from the last fiscal year. We weren't able to fix three vehicles. And then this one, that's costing twenty-eight thousand dollars to fix. So it's kind of put us in a bad place. And it's hard to predict who's, when they're going to collide, you know, have a collision and so.
Jerry?
Was, I might not have heard it good. Was that because of an accident or a wreck?
Yes, so we had, we had three collisions in the last fiscal year that we were unable to...
Wouldn't our insurance cover it?
Yes. Yes, but that doesn't show in this line. So basically when, so yeah, we're paying a thousand dollars for deductible and then the insurance is paying us back. However, I'm paying twenty thousand out of this line and it does, it goes back in the general fund.
That's what I just remembered.
That's how the account...
The insurance check don't go back to you all. It goes into a difference.
Right. If it did, it would just subtract from this.
If you counted the insurance, you wouldn't need that much, would you?
No, I wouldn't.
It hits the revenue line.
Exactly.
The expense has to actually show.
Yes.
You know, it looks like to me it'll go back to, into your budget, but I don't know why.
I agree, but I, I'm not an accountant, so I don't know.
All right. There, there is a motion on the floor. Ronnie, you have discussion?
The Brea community officer is, Brea city, Brea city community. Are they paying for that officer? Because I heard they had a problem. They didn't want to, they wanted the officer, but they didn't want to pay for it.
So I don't know how much I can discuss in this forum, but they've requested to have a retiree in that spot. We're working on a hiring process on that right now. We've advertised for that. As of yet, we have no...
They keep paying for that?
They would be, yes. Yes, sir. That's why they've requested a retiree.
I just want to make sure they're paying for it.
Yes. Yes, Ronnie, they would be.
Any further discussion on the motion to approve the line overage to sixty-five thousand dollars in vehicle repair and maintenance? Katie?
So I just want to clarify that these large repairs are related to collisions and we don't need to take a closer look at like our vehicle replacement schedule or our plan to purchase new vehicles or that kind of thing. This is kind of just like three-vehicle coincidence in some ways.
Well, we requested five vehicles this year.
Yeah, but do we need to tweak that?
I don't think so yet. I, I think it's going to help us if we can purchase all five vehicles. We've purchased three to this point. But like I said, we're, we're trying to make, we're, we're kind of playing by here because we don't know how many we're going to do with all these officers. And we're trying to keep a couple pool cars to, in case some of these go down or there's collisions and stuff like that.
Thank you, Katie. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, our request of voice vote. All in favor of approving the request for overage motion to sixty-five thousand, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. The motion carries and the overage approved. Thank you, Jay. Any other department heads before I move on to Sean? All right, seeing none. This, this time, we'll move forward to the city administrator's report and I'll recognize Sean Sandlin.
Thank you, Mayor. City council. I just wanted to thank everyone, all the community members, the businesses that contributed to the Halloween in the park, our departments that contributed. It was a successful event. I think Priscilla said we had over nine hundred kids attend that event. So that's great for our community and I would like to see something like that monthly or quarterly or something that we can all come together and have a good event like that. So we're going to work on that. Yeah. That's all I have, Mayor, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Sean. Any questions for Sean? Ronnie?
Sean, uh, I was, county has got electronic equipment in their trucks and vehicles for safety. You know, if you're blowing snow work or whatever, would, why don't we look at doing that for all of our equipment? We know they're out, but we don't know if they need help.
Yeah. Yeah, that's something we can look at. We'd already planned and looking at that in the new budget. So it won't be in the amended budget, but, no, in follow, the following year budget. Yeah.
Can I add one more comment to that?
Go right ahead, Jerry.
I'd like to see every city vehicle with a number on it big enough you could see and have them numbered. That way, if they're in a subdivision or something and somebody sees it, they say, well, that's five oh four or that's three oh two. Or it's just, you know, most everybody has their vehicles numbered. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Jerry. Any other further comments or for the city administrator questions? All right, seeing none, we'll move to the mayor's report. I did want to call attention to a new business. Lumber King opened last week. They had a grand opening and ribbon cutting. The lumber king was something that had been requested by our contractors and our builders and is going to be a real asset to our community to have those supplies at the ready right here in Brea. We haven't had anything like that. I don't think since Hick's lumber went out several years ago. So again, another, another major accomplishment for our business and tourism development, our business development director, Donna Angel, worked really hard on that one. I worked on it. Several of us did. And we're really pleased to see them here in town. Also, the State of the City address yesterday was hosted by the Chamber of Commerce at the Brea Gallery and Event Center. And I too am glad, Nancy, to see that being used. It's really a first-class facility. And I appreciate all the effort by the Chamber of Commerce, but also our tourism staff, Nancy personally and Robert and others, and, and our city staff as well, who worked to make that a successful event. My gratitude there. Earlier tonight, we, we haven't had a situation like what happened earlier. And I, I want to go back. There is a certain decorum that's... and I, I want to go back, um, there is a certain decorum that's required at meetings of our legislative body, which is our city council. Uh, that is governed by Municipal Order Number Zero Three Dash Twenty Twenty-three, Conduct of Legislative Body Meetings. And I do want to go back, um, the, the, the item that we put on the agenda each week and when I talk about items that have to be business-related, uh, they're on there for a reason. And it's something that the city council agreed to, I think unanimously at the time, um, and it's up to the chair to enforce that. So we do have to have order in our meetings and that's one of the reasons that we have rules. And I keep this just in case we have a situation. And on public comment, this is on page ten of the municipal order, I'm going to go ahead and read this in its entirety. Members of the public may only publicly address the legislative body during the public comment period of the agenda. Any member of the public who wishes to address the legislative body during the time must provide his or her name and street address and business organization he or she is representing, if any, prior to starting his or her comments. Citizens may speak on any city government-related matter. Each speaker is limited to three minutes total. Any public comments exceeding three minutes should be scheduled through the mayor's office. The purpose of city council meetings is to discuss city business and not to deal with individual personalities. Consequently, during any council meeting, the presiding officer, which in this case is the mayor, but it could be a council member if I'm not here, shall not permit any personally abusive attacks on any person, business or employer during the debate or public discussion. References to individuals, businesses or employers who are not specifically identified but who are identifiable by person or business references shall be treated as specific reference to the individual, business or employer. Nothing herein is intended to limit or restrain the negative, positive or neutral comment about the manner in which an individual employee, officer or council member carries out his or her duties in public office or employment. Conduct contrary to the normal presentation of business during the council meeting which disturbs or interrupts the orderly process and proceeding is a disturbance. No speaker shall make any slanderous or profane remark which otherwise disturbs, disrupts or otherwise impeded the orderly conduct of any council meeting. The presiding officer shall enforce these rules of the procedure. The presiding officer may ask commenters to submit their comments in writing, which is what I intended to do since this was a national level, uh, policy discussion and not a local policy discussion, um, in lieu of or in addition to comments for the distribution to council members. But again, uh, business-related relates to the items that we're discussing that are on the business agenda of the city council and it does not deal with state-level policymaking or national-level policy. When we, uh, have that kind of, that kind of comment, emails are welcome, but it's really not to be part of the city council meeting and, uh, the, the chair, uh, issues rulings, that, that can be appealed by the council if, if so desired. And it's not always easy to make sure that we have order and a proper decorum in our council meetings. And we will not have disruptions on my watch. We will not have that. This is a place of business. Uh, comments are always welcome as long as, as they follow the rules. But again, uh, my apologies that that happened, uh, on my behalf and on behalf of the speaker. Uh, but the, uh, what I've been charged with by all of you is to maintain order in our council meetings and we will have professional, professional and respectful comments that will follow the rules. Uh, that is my comment on that. And that ends mayor's comments and we'll move next to council comments and begin with Steve Cottle.
Mayor Fraley, can I ask a clarifying question?
You certainly may.
Thank you. Um, so one, I know we're, we're kind of threading the needle some right now, um, because I think there's a question that I had when I was an early council member, because there were some comments, some public comments that were personally upsetting to me.
Understood.
And, um, you helped and, and Rose at the time helped me understand that public comments, when people are coming to address the council, it doesn't, and I, and you, you just stated it, I just want to reaffirm, um, and just, or clarify.
Sure.
That it doesn't have to necessarily relate to agenda items. It just has to relate to city business.
Services provided by the city.
Right, yes, and so I would, and I'm just asking as an example since, um, Laura's question happened right after. And, and I also will say, I know it's hard because I feel warmly towards Laura. She comes all the time to council meetings. Um, and, but one of the ways we've structured it, and I'm sorry, I'm not trying to add more, but this is an important, important, important point that I learned as a new council member, that people are welcome to give comment, but we don't have to or it might not even be the best place for us to answer questions. So, um, like when Mayor Fraley answered that question about the, um, food bank, like that was just something that, um, was an easy thing to answer and, and that was something that's already, you know, we, it's already well-established. But that sometimes when public comment is involving questions, it's not typically a great format for us to engage in, in back and forth. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. But that also, it is appropriate if people have questions or con-, not questions, if people have comments about city business that's not on the agenda, it is appropriate for them to address us during public comment.
Yes, they, they can do that. Normally what we would do in a situation like that where it's not an interactive dialogue.
Right.
Uh, we would make sure that the city clerk, city administrator or someone gets back to that person with an answer.
And then I just wanted to also add that people can email, one email address to address the entire city council via email. And that, can I add that, can I?
You certainly can, because that's actually what I was going to suggest, but my, but my, my, my call for order was, was not responded to and was not respected.
Okay, so it's citycouncil@bereaky.gov. And I just want to say as a council person, it's always great to have people come and give public comment, but I also really appreciate emails or even phone calls, I'll give up, you know, or, or anything because it gives us more time to think carefully about what you all said. And I also know that like speaking publicly can be intimidating and so if people don't feel comfortable giving a public comment, I just want to assure you all that when, when I get an email, I take it really seriously and we don't get a ton of emails. So feel free to shoot us an email if there's something you're concerned about or if it does relate to something that's not a specific city business thing, but it's something you would like to talk to us about. Because just for me personally, I, I want to say I welcome that and I'm, I bet my colleagues do as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, and, and again, you know, we want to encourage public comment. I think we do want to do that. But when items are not related to business that's conducted by the city, uh, it's incumbent on me, based on the municipal order which was passed this, by this body, to enforce the rules and I have to do that. Um, I think, uh, we've heard a lot about healthcare and national level policy, but I don't think that this is the proper forum for that. But I think that if anybody wants to contact a city council member, the mayor, city administrator and say, hey, would you write a letter or do something on our behalf, that, that's, that's certainly okay. But this isn't the right forum for national level debate or national level policy. Um, this is the place for city business.
Yeah, I'm not arguing that at all.
Understood, and I'm, and I'm saying that to compliment what you said quite frankly.
But I will, I would say that like the question saying, hey, I support the Berea Food Bank. I want to make sure the city of Berea is supporting the Berea Food Bank. I, I saw that as an appropriate public comment.
I think, I think so too, which is exactly why I answered the question.
Okay.
Uh, because we, we do, um, we do support the food bank and it is, uh, part of our policy to do that. You're welcome. Next we'll move to, I think I was on city council comments, right? And I'll begin this time with Steve Cottle. Steve, you have the floor.
So I wasn't going to talk about public comments, but I think I shall because I think it's important to give some historical context, uh, because somebody's going to watch this meeting tonight and make some reference or some inference that, um, why something happened had something to do with the topic at hand in, in particular or which way it leans because we seem to live in a society that we love to pigeonhole things. But I think it's just important for people to recognize that public comment has been something that we've wrestled with several times on this council. And the reason that we've done that is because, um, we've had times where comments were inappropriate. They were hurtful. They were attacking. They were, and that is not the point of a, um, of a public comment in a business meeting. I'm not, this was not attacking any of us and this was not, but it, you can't pick and choose. And that's something that we talked about early on, is that if it's any, if it's any way outside of, uh, the rules that have been set forth in that, um, in that document, then you have to end the public comment. And I, I give credit, and not just tonight, because again, this has been something that we've grappled with for several years. We've moved public comment because of that. We've, there was a time that we considered removing public comment from council meetings. It had gotten to the point where it was disruptive for the business at hand because the only thing that people were trying to do was attack council members or talk about people in the community or use it as some sort of bully puppet to, to be able to, to do something toward individuals. And so, um, I commend the work that we've done over the years to really refine what public comment looks like at this body. Because I do think that, um, for several years now, the public comment section has been very informative, very direct, very business-oriented, um, and I commend the mayor, um, for being consistent over the years because it's gone both ways, left and right, where people got up and were told, you know, that is out of line and move on. We've had points of order where that's been done with council members saying it. So I think it's important that people realize that this is not one-off. This is probably ten years of dealing with public comment and how that, um, can keep our, can make sure that our, our council meetings are productive and they're focused on the work of our city, uh, and not politics as a whole, because this is a nonpartisan body that is meant to make decisions for our city and the best decisions that we can for our citizens. So I just think it's important to have that kind of context to realize that this is not the first time that public comments have become a, an issue for us and I commend the mayor for, um, being consistent in that process, uh, as we've gone. Uh, I really appreciated, uh, the comments about tourism. I think it's, we're, there you go. Uh, it's, it's going really well and I appreciate the work you've done, several events that I've been to, um, that, uh, everybody has really enjoyed. Uh, I really appreciated Jerry's comments pointing out the contributions of our Tourism Commission over the years. Um, I think in the last ten years, the role that they have, have played has evolved and, um, that's been a lot to do with the people in this, this body who have worked with those, um, to, to think about that, that from a bigger perspective than just bringing people in and also serving our, our community. So thank you for that and the crowd's gotten a lot smaller as we've gone on because this meeting's been a lot longer. Thanks.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, next we'll move to, uh, Jerry Little. Jerry, you have the floor.
I got two things. I want to thank Amanda and her coaching department for helping Lumber King get- We can talk our talk. I want to thank Amanda and her coaching department, helping Lumber King get in and get situated and get through the coach process and I just want to say thank you. And, uh, I want to thank our mayor here tonight. He, uh, he done a very professional job of trying to hold a order and, uh, you know, we all need to try to, we, none of us didn't want to see that happen, okay? But I thought he did a good job of holding order. And if anybody's ever watched Facebook, they don't be like the London City Council. We sure don't want to be like that. So that's all I can say. So you, you just need to watch it sometime if you want to see a show, but that's all I've got. Thank you. Thank you, Bruce. I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Jerry. Next we'll move to Ronnie Terrell. Ronnie, I didn't forget about you there.
I thought you did. I was hurt. I'm over it now. But anyway, I was worried about, uh, the stuff that happened here because I thought the police chief, I don't know, when she went over there, but, uh, he, he, he finally got her calmed down. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Ronnie. Uh, next we'll move to, uh, down on the end, we'll move to Steve Davis. I'm going to jump around.
Um, I always want to thank the public for coming. Um, keep coming, uh, despite the way things turned out, uh, keep coming. Um, you got things to say as long as they meet the guidelines of the ordinance, that's great, or municipal order. Um, on the flip side of all that, whatever your feeling is, national, state, local, if you see somebody in need, that needs a meal, then let's feed them, okay? I mean, forget about all the rest of it and if you see somebody in need, feed them. And if you've got money to donate to the food bank, donate to the food bank. I mean, that's just humanity, okay? But let's, don't forget that in the midst of all our bureaucratic stuff that we have to do at whatever it is, state, local or state or level. They're people and people are hurting for whatever reason, you know? And, and let's remember to reach out to the neighbor that needs to be fed. It might be somebody elderly too, not just a kid, either one. Let's, you know, that's, that's what I'll leave you with tonight.
Thank you, Steve. Next we'll move to John Payne. John, you have the floor.
Um, first I'd like to apologize for my late arrival today. Um, I do want to thank the Human Rights Commission and congratulate the winners of the, uh, Fee and Blythe Awards, uh, for their good works. Uh, thanks everyone for coming out and speaking. I do want to crib a little bit of information off of your State of the City address to point out some of the improvements to parks as a member of the Parks Committee. Just looking at the nine hundred trick-or-treaters, the, uh, Ellipt Street Connector, which should give us about eleven miles of continuous shared use paths in the community, the addition of shade structures in the park, this massive pool project that we were all about to pull our hair out to get through, the addition of pickleball courts, basketball court resurfacing, um, various renovations, uh, running more than fifty free programs throughout the summer, um, the work to get things ready on the, uh, Trailhead restroom and concession project. These are not small things. These require a lot of, uh, a lot of work from not only the city administration but the, the parks, the parks employees, the public works employees and it's magnificent seeing that much growth in our community. And, um, the only other thing I wanted to leave us with is just a reminder, um, they anticipate a much greater need at the food bank this month because of current events. We have a rare event to have donations matched up until November eleventh at the Berea Food Bank. So I implore anyone who has the ability to give to do so and those who have needs, the services are there and we invite you to use them.
Thank you, John. Next we'll move to Katie Starksman. Katie, you have the floor.
Thanks. I, um, I'm grateful to the Human Rights Commission for the work that you all do and congrats to the deserving award winners. And, um, it, it's neat to see the commitment, um, that they both have to creating a equitable and inclusive and welcoming community. And so that seemed really appropriate, um, for both of them to be recognized. And man, that, this was upsetting today, um, at the public comment and I, I recognize that decorum is important and I recognize the, um, what, what we as council set as public comment and, and Steve touched on it a little bit, but public comment has been fraught uh, in my entire time on council and it, there have been times when I personally have been attacked from people giving public comment and trying to sidestep that and, you know. So I just want to say that this is a stressful time. All politics is local and this is, there are so many people in our community who are hurting. And I don't want to, um, just say, well, we, we can't deal with things at the state and federal level because we do have a very, um, limited job, right? Like our job, the money that we have to fool with, the, the job that we have through KRS is, is very limited. And so I am troubled that, um, we may, while, yes, the Berea Hospital's closure does not directly relate to city business right now, but boy, it sure would affect the safe and healthy of our, safety and health, healthiness of our community if the Berea Hospital did shut down. So I just want to say that I understand, um, not, I don't know all of the comments that were getting ready to be said today at all, but I, I do empathize with some of the messages that have been coming to council because we would be blind and we shouldn't be intentionally blind to what is going on in our community and the people that are being impacted. And I really hope that as we continue to serve on council, we can do our best job within the narrow framework of, of our job, right? To support our community in the ways that it makes sense. And I know that sound, that sounds hollow even now as I'm saying it, so I'm not trying to just be a bullshitter. But like, within the framework of the work that we do, um, we may be called on in increasingly trying times to be ma-, to be making decisions that might be different or more challenging than decisions we've made or spend money in different ways or that kind of thing. And, and I hope that our council has built, um, respectful relationships with each other or built levels of trust with each other that we can be able to meet the challenges that our community may be increasingly facing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Katie. And for the last word, we'll move to Teresa Centers. Teresa, you- Teresa, you have the floor.
And I don't want to put words in in anybody's mouth, but I know that Katie did not mean to start any kind of rumor that Berea Hospital is closing.
No, no. But we've had comments.
I I I understand, but I but I know how things get twisted around. So I just I just want to say that. And been good discussion. I'm not going to repeat everything everybody said, but I I pretty much agree with 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 Steve and Jerry. Thank you, back to the tourism thing for for that list. We get we get so much flack over that tax and 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 have for years. And and I I think that it is good that we bring these things forward so that the community knows what what's being done. And infrastructure is important. And in a body like this, our little local nonpartisan body, that that's what we're charged with, is spending the taxes that we collect from you all that we literally take out of your pockets and provide the services that the greater community needs. And that's that's basically our job. And it is it is not in our purview to to fund healthcare or to fund SNAP or or those federal things. We can't, we don't. We cannot be all things to all people. But we do live in a community that is very compassionate. No, and and I know, I mean, it it gets more polarized every day. But until we can start talking to each other and and find some way to overcome this this wall, this my way or the highway, we're, you know, we're always going to have these these situations. But I do appreciate Berea and I appreciate people's passions. People are very passionate about saying whatever side their their own politically. But but we're here to do the people's business and that's all I have.
Thank you, Teresa. And that brings us to the end of our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn by Steve Cottle? Is there a second by John Payne? All in favor of the motion to adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. The meeting is adjourned.